Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at six oh four. Six o'clock, sorry. Okay, and starting with the city and county of Honolulu reports, Honolulu Fire Department.
Three rubbish fires and seventeen activated alarms with no fire. Uh, we had a hundred thirteen medical calls and seven motor vehicle crash slash collisions last month. Um, fire safety tip for May twenty twenty five, um, it's gonna be home fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers serve as the first line of defense against fires and often extinguish the fire before the fire department arrives. For more information, visit home firesprinkler.org. Fire spreads quickly. A fire can turn deadly in under two minutes. Synthetic materials burn quickly and release deadly poisonous smoke. High-risk individuals in home fires include small children, elderly adults, those with disabilities, and pets. Fire sprinklers protect your home and family and activate automatically to control the fire, thereby giving everyone a chance to escape. The best protection is having working smoke alarms, fire sprinklers, and a practiced fire escape plan. Information about Honolulu's ordinances relating to fire safety is available at fire.honolulu.gov. Any questions at this time?
Okay, starting with Claire.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. One is, fire extinguishers, where can we buy them at a reasonable rate? Do you happen to know or would your education people be the point of contact?
Well, we're generally not, um, supposed to recommend.
I don't mean a brand, but what's, because you can't order them on Amazon, they won't ship here. So I don't know where to, what stores carry them? Where do people obtain them now? Okay.
Speaking as a, I, I can, I can talk to you afterwards.
Okay. Um, the other is, have there been any more brush fires in my Punch Bowl forest?
Um, you know, I think last month we had a couple of, they were more like rubbish fires, um, off of Prospect Street.
Yeah.
Um, that could have turned into brush fires, but I think we were able to stop them before they spread.
You have to go way deep in there, yeah?
They're kinda in there, yeah.
Centipede land. Okay. Um, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sergeant Lee. Uh, for the stats of April twenty twenty five, motor vehicle thefts, seven. Uh, the previous was nine. Uh, burglary, ten. Uh, previously it was three. Theft, we're up to, uh, we're down to seventeen. Previously it was forty-two. U M V, unauthorized entry to motor vehicle, car break-in, uh, seven. Uh, previously it was five. But assault, uh, the total of five. Previously it was eight. Sex assault, zero. Previously it was three. That's a good sign. Uh, graffiti, uh, two. Previously zero. And lastly, narcotics, illegal drugs, uh, we're up seven. Um, the previous month was two. We had a total call of, uh, two thousand two hundred forty-two calls. The previous call, uh, previous month was twenty-three hundred seventy-four calls. Um, if you have any question, more detailed questions, you can go to the website, www.honolulu.org. And, um, this past month, we got a total of fifty-eight citations on Luna Lilo and Pecoy. And I know that's a major concern for the community in the neighborhood. So, well, we made an effort to, you know, try and deter cars from blocking the intersection and crossing illegally. Yeah.
Thank you very much for that. Um, we'll start with, uh, Sam, the, oh, did I see Chuck? But, uh, Sam, then, wow, Claire. Oh my God, my brain just shut down. Okay, uh, but yeah, so Sam and then Claire.
I noticed that, um, Waikiki now has ATMs that they're doing in bikes.
ATMs?
Yeah, ATMs and bikes doing patrols in the parks.
What do you mean by ATMs?
ATV.
ATV.
Oh, ATVs, okay.
ATVs.
Okay.
ATVs.
Okay. I was wondering if it was withdrawing money from the bikes. The ATM, wow.
Are they planned to do that in, in Makiki?
So we currently do have in District One. We have ATVs in District One.
Yeah.
Uh, we have maybe about, I'd say about eight, eight ATVs, active ATVs.
Okay.
And we usually head to the parks because of its all touring vehicle purposes, which is Alamo Park, Kakako Park, um, all the way down to Atkinson Boulevard.
They're not doing anything in Makiki Park, are they?
You know, I ju- I just saw them, um, coming down on New Orleans, so I'm, I can go check further, but,
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys want, if you guys wanna, want to see more of them in the parks and Dole and Pecoy.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I, I, I'll ask my command. That's a, I never thought about that, but the parks aren't that big, you know?
What they, they, they have a tendency to, a lot of homeless like to hang out in the perimeter.
Right, 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 right.
So showing up in a, in a patrol where you actually go into the park would be a good idea.
Yeah, so we did a couple of operations where, um, our units, you know where Dole Park is?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we did, um, uh, make some, we did put effort in there and we made some arrests in the back, because actually, you have to actually climb up to the, to the back. So the touring vehicles can't do that, but, yeah, yeah.
Gives them an idea that they're.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, so, I mean, we can just, you know, like, like I said, we can ask our command to just do, uh, you know, um, just more presence, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because there isn't much to, the much, um, park to really ride, but if there's just presence for maybe, you know, the other people for us to show that we're here, you know, on the ATVs. And, and it does look kind of rugged, right, with the motors and, uh, you know, like, oh, wow, they're here. So, yeah, I'll go let them know.
Okay, Claire.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, Chair. Ah, speaking of Dole Park, which is in my turf, that's Punch Bowl.
Okay.
And where our community garden is. Have you recently routed another group of homeless out of that camp behind there?
We, actually, we check it almost daily.
Okay, because we're noticing, I live up, you know, at that five-way intersection.
Okay.
Respect Ala Pa' Ilaani, uh, vagrants going into the dumpsters in the area. But a couple of weeks ago, one came right up our driveway to the dumpster trash room, and a neighbor saw him and approached, made the mistake of approaching him instead of calling you, and the person pulled the gun.
Wow.
So somewhere in your reports at, uh, uh, six-six-six-six-seven-zero Prospect, turned out to be a fake gun. However, as you well know, when someone points a gun at you, it's a real gun.
Right.
At that moment in time. And the guy ended up throwing the gun and the police retrieved it, but we're starting to have a kind of scary problem of people wandering onto the premises and moped theft across the street. So in that corner there, we're, we're, we're seeing an increase of, um, uh, nefarious behavior. So perhaps alert that crew that.
Okay. Well, what is that, what is that, uh, exact location?
Six-six-six-six-seven-zero Prospect.
Six-six-six-seven Prospect.
Six-six-six-dash-six-seven-zero Prospect. So it's at that, right at that five-way intersection of Ilaani Prospect and Ala Pa' Ilaani. Up the stairs from the Dole Park.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we're, we're getting into a problem here, and if fake gun is a real gun when it's pointed at you.
Do you, do you know what time of day?
It was early evening. I think the sun had just gone down, so it was dark enough.
Yeah, because in the daytime, we don't see, you know, broad daylight during the day hours, we don't see too many of them up there.
I saw during the day, someone wandering up, shirtless guy with a backpack.
Yeah, but not a whole bunch is what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
I just don't know where they're suddenly coming from, so I wondered if Dole Park, uh, can reinstated it, so.
Right, so, uh, what, what, like I said two times earlier, is we infiltrate the parks, and they kind of ruffle the feathers, and there's sometimes they come out and they bleed into the community, you know? They, they usually hide where, um, people can't really see them.
Yeah.
But when we do ruffle the feathers, you know, um, people.
The dust shakes out and lands on my.
Residuals come out, yeah.
Um, I get it. Okay, and we have asked you to keep an eye on the traffic at that intersection, because so many people rolling through the stop sign. So, um, please do keep that up, because we're gonna work with Department of Transportation Services to mitigate that.
Yeah.
Okay, we need another solution. The stop signs, everyone's ignoring the stop.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we did get fifty-eight, uh, this month, so the, the, the next time the, next sergeant comes up, let's see if he beats our, my numbers, okay?
Fifty-eight at Prospect Ilaani?
Uh, Luna Lilo, yeah.
Oh, you're down.
Yeah, yeah.
Down the hill. Okay, yeah, come up the hill and try up there. There's nowhere to hide your car. It's an open intersection, so see what you can do with no camouflage.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, next, Chuck.
Sergeant Lee, thank you for addressing the situation down on Honolulu and Pecoy. Um, I also wanted to ask you, um, and I've mentioned this before, and I spoke to Major Roberts about this. The intersection of Pensacola and Luna Lilo, when they're going on the on-ramp.
Okay.
There's a, there's so many running of red lights there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know at one time they, they had some presence there and it kind of quelled a little, but now wild by west out there.
Hmm, okay. Um, I'll address it with, um, my guys, who was actually concentrating on that, um, Luna and Pecoy, because that, you know, that turn and that blocking intersection. I, I get it, everybody's going home at the same time, they're trying to, they're blocking that intersection, they're trying to get through that light, that intersection, so there's so much only of us we have. Maybe we can talk to Major Roberts about getting more staffing to get that in also, you know, and do everything one time and go up to six-six-seven-zero Prospect. But yeah, well, um, we, we only got a certain amount of manpower, so we can take care of so much at a time, depending on how much our command gives us, yeah. But I'll let them know about that issue also.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Seeing none, I'll go. Um, so I think a couple of weeks ago, it started making the rounds on social media that maybe there are a bunch of rowdy youths who are over on.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, over, uh, by our Lino, huh, Luna Lilo off-ramp, uh, stopping traffic, and I believe there are quite a few cop cars too there. Uh, do we know what happened with that?
So, for what, for what I know is, uh, by the time we got there, everyone was, everyone was getting dispersed and it was raining. Nobody really came forward to point out any individuals, certain individuals that were the troublemakers, so we couldn't really identify anybody or get anyone on that time. Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. It was just calls and to make a complaint, someone has to come down and meet us and actually point them out and say, yeah, he hit my car or whatnot.
Okay, uh, have we seen a rise of this anywhere else, or is it, did it just happen in our neighborhood?
No, it's, well, there's a rise in crime all over, but mainly that particular time is, it seems more magnified because it happened in Makiki, right? This is a nice calm area and it's quiet, so to see like a riot like that is un- unordinary, right? So, I mean, I, I would say it's a, you know, um, isolated incident, I would say, because I didn't see it happen again. I mean, have you guys seen it happen anytime after that? Yeah, I haven't, because I know my guys, after that incident, we made patrols over and over and on that time, timeframe, and the kids didn't come back, so.
Okay, uh, we do have someone who might be here to point towards maybe yet another incident, uh, involving some rowdy youth. So, uh, if you'd like to, if you don't mind coming up and speaking into the microphone and giving us your name, Adam.
Hello, my name is Adam Kirchman. I am the property manager at Village Malohia, uh, fifteen thirty-five Pensacola. Uh, we're on the corner of Pensacola and Davenport, and across the street from us, eleven thirty-seven Davenport. Uh, we have youths that, um, about five o'clock in the afternoon, um, just started picking up rocks and smashed about four, um, windshields in daylight, as well as damaging at least up to like seven just vehicles on that road. Um, my cameras in front of our building, uh, picked them up, uh, so we got who it was. Um, I've know these youths for some time, they've been harassing our building and people in our building for a long time. I work with the police as much as I can. Um, I call every single time. I meet with you every single time. I point them out every single time. Um, these youths know me, they don't like me, because I'm on, on them constantly.
Right.
Um, my, my concern is when, uh, this event happened, um, they damaged all these vehicles. Um, you guys came out in force. I appreciate all that you do. Um, but you, it seemed like there was just a lecture given to these kids, and that afternoon, like an hour later, I had about five different residents calling me complaining that they were out in the street throwing bottles at our building, uh, yelling and cursing at our building. Um, and I went down every single time. I called the police every single time. If this was going on till about three-thirty in the morning. Um, from what I've, uh, gathered from other people in the area, that same night, uh, they continued throughout the city, I mean, throughout Makiki. Um, there are the, that night was the night that they wrote, uh, "Welcome to Makiki" uh, through graffiti on the corner of, uh, Pensacola and Wilder, which is Avropo, I guess. Um, and then on top of my building as well. Um, and I reported that graffiti as well. So my, my question and concern is, if they had been, if they had been detained at least for a little while, or something to stop them, that at least they would have ended our, our street and not had continued for the rest of the night. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, what do, what more can we do?
The, well, I would, I would, being a detective for two years prior to beginning in patrol, the, the most important tool we need for prosecution is video surveillance.
And I, and I gave, I gave that to the police. They have, they saw them do it.
Okay, so, so if, if you can point them out in the video and say, "That's him in the video," we, we can make the rest.
I, I showed it to the police officer, there was no arrest made. I showed it to an undercover, I, I mean, a plain-clo- plainclothes police officer and a police officer wearing uniform, and nothing was done.
If you feel, if you feel that, uh, you reported a crime correctly, and the officer's not doing his job, you can, um, contact the supervisor.
It's not that I'm blaming anyone for not doing their job. My concern is that I feel like maybe there's were some restraints on the force that I don't know, that you guys, as I, I'm only been here for about three and a half years.
Hmm.
Uh, before here, I, I worked as a social worker and as well as I worked as juvenile corrections in South Side, Chicago. So I understand kind of the jurisdiction of what's going on there, but I wouldn't presume to bring that here. So I'm trying to figure out what it is that's makes it different here than it is in other places I've been.
Well, our, our laws are somewhat the same, but everyone has, you know, their rights, yeah. And you can't, you can't preview people from their rights if, if they didn't really do anything that you didn't see. You only can stop someone, uh, for, for probable cause and, you know, suspicion, but if at any point you don't have anything else, you can't hold them any longer.
I mean, the officers got the footage, they brought it with them, they were taking pictures with their phones of like video cameras of our building.
Okay.
And that night, those kids were out there flipping me off from my balcony.
Did you identify them to the police? And they didn't make the arrest or anything? Okay, do you know their names?
Um, I don't know their names, no.
Okay.
Um, I, I can tell you where they live. I can show you with it, I can show you in a lineup. I've done it with police officers before. I've walked up to these kids and been like with the officer and said, "This one, that one, and that one."
Did you make a report?
Yes.
Okay, and did you follow up with the report?
Yes.
Where, where is the report now?
Well, are you talking about the report with the cars?
Yeah.
There were several different reports done for that, because there were separate cars. I guess they were trying to lump it all together into one.
Um, well, you can follow with the, are you the complainant in this case?
There was multiple, because it was.
Are you the, are you one of the complainants?
No, because my car wasn't damaged.
Okay, so have the, so me, so the prosecutors will only talk to the complainants. They won't contact you.
Right.
So have you checked with the complainants?
They're from other buildings. It was the entire.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, the prosecutors will get back to the complainants, so maybe they got back to the complainants and didn't talk to you yet.
Okay. Well, my, my thoughts were, my, my concern is that I feel that my building's being threatened.
Oh, okay.
Because these kids have pointed us out.
Yeah, do you?
And I don't know what I'm supposed to do about it.
Well, like I said, surveillance footage on the outside, um, higher security, uh, get a key.
Thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year for our building, that's.
You can hire special duty. You, you know, well, that's expensive. Um, I don't know what else to tell you, but.
Encouraging cameras to be installed, but, yeah, this is, I mean, these are things are not cheap. These are, these are expensive.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, so.
Yeah, uh, you know, I sympathize with you, and, you know, we'll, we'll do more to, you know, be more proactive. But, um, you know.
I'll just keep, I'll keep calling. I mean, that's.
Yeah, what I, what I suggest is call, make the report, and follow up on the report. If you're the complainant, follow up on that, and.
I don't get much sleep. I don't get much sleep, because.
Yeah, so if you don't get much sleep, and you can identify them to the police, um, that, that's the best way to do it. And I'll talk to you after, more about it, and if.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll take you on the side more about it, um.
I just have one question. What ages are these people?
Um, between the ages of twelve and fifteen, sixteen. Um, except for one gentleman who looks like he's in his mid-twenties, who likes to buy them alcohol.
Oh. Okay, thank you, Adam, and hopefully, yeah, you can put your heads together, um, outside the meeting and, and see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Okay, next up, uh, Board of Water Supply, Michelle Harmon. Okay, we don't see her online, so we're moving on to Rick Blangierde's representative, Mayor, uh, Megan Johnson.
Hi, good evening, Megan Johnson. I'm with the Department of Customer Services. I wanted to make an announcement about voting for the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven Neighborhood Board elections. Voting for your next Neighborhood Board members runs from April twenty-fifth through May sixteenth, so tomorrow. These board members will serve from July twenty twenty-five to June twenty twenty-seven. Voters should receive a mailer containing a passcode and a PIN, allowing you to vote online at H T T S colon forward slash web, W E B, the number five, dot H N L, dot info, forward slash N B E. In-person voting is also available at the Neighborhood Commission Office, which is located at Kapalama Hale at nine-two-five Dillingham Boulevard, Suite one-six-zero, between eight-thirty A M and four P M on weekdays excluding holidays. And paper ballots may also be requested by emailing nco@Honolulu.gov or calling eight-zero-eight-seven-six-eight-three-seven-one-zero. Again, Monday through Friday, eight-thirty A M to four P M, weekdays excluding holidays. Voters will need their passcode, PIN, and date of birth to verify their identity when requesting a paper ballot. Paper ballots must be postmarked by May sixteenth and arrive at NCO by May twenty-third to be counted. The final results will be published by June second, twenty twenty-five. Please note, residents will not receive mailers if their sub-district is uncontested or if they did not vote in the general election. The following races are contested for Neighborhood Board number ten, Makiki, uh, Sub-District number two. And special note that Neighborhood Board ten's Sub-District three was contested, however, it became uncontested, uncontested due to late withdrawal of one candidate. Voters in Neighborhood Board eleven, um, Special District three will receive mailers containing passcodes, pins, and can technically vote. However, per Neighborhood Plan, uh, the Neighborhood Commission Office must honor the late withdrawal, so the remaining candidates in Special District three will automatically be appointed to fill the four available seats. And, um, I just really, um, I'm gonna try to go as, as fast as I can, but, um, I have, uh, I was able to get um, answers to numerous questions that were posed to me at the April, um, twenty twenty-five meeting, so if I can just, um, go through these, and, um, you can let me know if you have any questions. So the first question was, what is the, it's now called the Department of Housing and Land Management, which is a newly created department, so what, um, Department Housing and Land Management projects are being planned for the Makiki slash lower Punch Bowl area? So the answer from this department is, um, that the Department of Housing and Land Management does not have any projects planned for the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl area, other than the potential development of fourteen-twenty-one Pensacola Street project. Um, however, this department is deferring to the Department of Planning and Permitting, who may have additional projects planned generally for the area. Um, the second, second question was about, uh, Bill Seven Affordable Housing Projects and Developers. Um, I'm not gonna repeat all of the questions, but basically I tried to consolidate that there was board members and residents who raised various concerns about the implementation of Bill Seven, which is also known as Revised Ordinances of Hawaii, excuse me, of Honolulu, Chapter Thirty-two projects, including how the Department of Planning and Permitting regulates affordable housing projects, the criteria to qualify for Bill Seven projects, affordability of microunits, and the sustainability of these projects, how these developments are monitored in terms of their impacts to residential areas, and there was a listing of various projects, and, um, I know there was a specific question, um, with respect to sixteen-seventeen Ala Pa' I Street project, and there was another question about can the Department of Planning and Permitting provide an update about all ongoing Bill Seven projects in the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl townless neighborhood? What is the process of a Bill project, Bill Seven project from start to finish? Also, how does the city define quote-unquote transit-rich areas? So, um, this, these, uh, responses are from the Department of Planning and Permitting. In terms of the affordability of microunits, I, uh, I was referred to Revised Ordinances of Honolulu, Section thirty-two dash one-point-one, which is that the Affordable Rental Housing Project must meet the following criteria. Number one, at least eighty percent of the total units are rented to households earning one hundred percent and below the area meeting median income, or A M I. And number two, for a period of at least fifteen years, after a certificate of occupancy is issued for Affordable Rental Housing Project, the affordable units are rented at or below the rental rate limits established by the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, or also known as HUD, for households earning one hundred percent of the area medium, median income for applicable household size. Um, and to ensure that, um, these projects meet these, this criteria, a certification must be filed annually with the Director of the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services, affirming that at least eighty unit, excuse me, eighty percent of the total units in the Affordable Rental Housing are affordable rental housing units. Um, with respect to the sixteen-seventeen Ala Pa' I Street project, um, the response was that the conditional use permit did not approve specific building plans or parking layouts for the intended development. The conditions of the conditional use permit state that the application was only reviewed and approved pursuant to the provisions of Revised, Revised Ordinances of Honolulu, Section twenty-one dash five-point-three-eight-zero, and that any subsequent development onsite must comply with all applicable regulations that are reviewed separately. The project is currently undergoing that review. The project is currently undergoing that review process to ensure compliance with Revised Ordinances of Honolulu, Chapter Thirty Two, the Building Code, and all other relevant requirements before any final approvals are granted. In terms of what projects, uh, D P P is is working on, um, with respect to these affordable housing projects in this neighborhood, I have a listing. Um, Pence Metro, which is fourteen oh seven Pensacola Streets, the Leung Residence, which is eighteen oh two Makiki Streets, Lejo Lejo Apartments, fifteen twenty five Lejo Lejo, uh, twelve thirty four Matlock, which is twelve thirty four Matlock Avenue. Thurston Residence, which is located at fifteen thirty one Thurston Avenue, Hale Vi Vi, which is eleven fifty Davenport Streets, fourteen twenty seven Ernest Streets, which is located at fourteen twenty seven Ernest Streets, fifteen sixty eight Pensacola Streets, located at fifteen sixty eight Pensacola Streets, twelve twenty six Kinao LLC, which is located at twelve twenty six Kinao, three X T Project One LLC, which is located at fifteen forty two Lejo Lejo Streets, K A O Moku twenty three, which is located at fifteen twenty K A Moku Streets, Ala Pae Development LLC, which is located at sixteen oh nine Ala Pae Streets, and Lam slash Amakata Development LLC, which is located at fifteen twenty five Pe Koi Streets. Um, based on the requirements of the Revised Ordinances of Honolulu, Chapter Thirty Two, the building permits related to these Chapter Thirty Two projects, which I know that sometimes in these meetings we refer to them as Bill Seven, but these projects are processed like every other building permit, except that the applicant must execute a declaration of restrictive covenants. The covenants must be filed with the building permit applications for the affordable rental housing project. Upon acceptance of a complete building permit application, the building official is supposed to approve or disapprove of the application within ninety calendar days. If the building official does not approve or disapprove of the application, the building permit is deemed approved. The building official administers the building construction standards. Unless specifically modified, the build, building and housing code requirements of Revised Ordinances of Honolulu Chapters Sixteen and Sixteen A apply to affordable rental housing projects. And there is additional information about the building permit process on the Department of and Planning, excuse me, the Department of Planning and Permitting website at H T T P S colon forward slash W W W dot Honolulu, all spelled out, dot gov, forward slash D P P, forward slash permitting, forward slash building dash permits, plural, slash, excuse me, hyphen home. And, um, the response to what are transit-rich areas are transit-rich areas are those areas with a variety of multimodal options, including buses, rail, bicycle lanes, car show, car share locations, bike share locations, sidewalks, and pedestrian paths. Um, the next update I have is about a no parking sign that was reported to be obscured on Akala Lane and the status. Um, uh, the Department of Planning and Permitting responded that Akala Lane is a private roadway. The city sidewalk ordinances do not apply to the private roadway and D P P cannot regulate the encroachment or overgrowth of private trees blocking signs. And then, uh, the Department, uh, D T S, the Department of Transportation Services, also responded and they completed an investigation into Chair Char's request to review, uh, no parking sign on Akala Lane. And there, the D T S investigation confirmed that Akala Lane is privately owned. Additionally, a review of their legal records did not indicate that any parking restrictions were installed by the city. As such, uh, no further action is required. Uh, and there's a question about what is, uh, Department of Transportation Services doing to improve bus service in the Makiki Lower Tentless Neighborhood? And the Department of Transportation Services responded that they continue to monitor and evaluate the bus system to address changes in services, excuse me, service demand, productivity, and resource allocation. There are no plans to modify the bus service in the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tentless area at this time. However, suggestions on how to better serve the community are always welcome. The next question was, has the Department of Transportation Services conducted a traffic study at the intersection of Pensacola Street and South Beretania Street along ten fifty six South Beretania Street nearby Chick-fil-A Makiki? And if so, can they share the results of the study? So, uh, the Department of Transportation Services responded that they have not conducted any formal traffic studies at the intersection of Pensacola Street and South Beretania Street or in front of the Chick-fil-A restaurant. However, uh, D T S has investigated the area and installed an additional toe-away zone parking restriction sign in front of the restaurant. D T S has also approved the installation of do not block driveway signage at the Queen Victoria condominium driveways. D T S has conducted multiple observations of traffic conditions in the area, but has not identified any significant impacts that would warrant additional traffic engineering measures at this time. They will continue to monitor traffic operations on this area and will reassess if conditions change in the future. The next question was, can D T S please restripe the faded crosswalk and roadway markings at the intersection of K A O Moku Street and Wilder Avenue? And the Department of Transportation Services responded that they will conduct a site inspection and will submit a paint and sign work order to the Department of Facility Maintenance to repaint any faded roadway markings in the area. And Department Transportation Services will inform this board of the results, or I I will inform you. Once the investigation is completed and the Department of Transportation Services appreciates your patience and understanding. The next question was, if if speed humps are built on Beretania Street and King Street, how will speed humps impact emergency response time and safety for emergency responders? Uh, the Honolulu Police Department responded, there are currently speed humps on Pensacola Street and Kapialani Boulevard. While these speed humps slow down response times, the Honolulu Police Department does not believe they significantly impact overall response times or safety of the public. The primary goal of emergency responders is to save lives. While speed humps may cause some delays, their overall effect is minimal in terms of response times. Furthermore, the safety of the public is top priority and the benefits of traffic calming measures such as speed humps in reducing accidents and improving pedestrian safety do not foresee uh, speed humps on Beretania Street and King Street posing a major issue for emergency response operations. Uh, the Department of Transportation Services responded that they currently have no plans to install install speed humps on South King Street or South Beretania Street. Um, the Department of Transportation Services consults with the city's emergency services departments to evaluate potential impacts of traffic calming measures on emergency response time and overall community safety. And the Honolulu Fire Department responded that they investigated this inquiry and found that speed humps will increase the emergency response time, but not impact the safety of Honolulu Fire Department personnel. Fire companies that service the area will continue to conduct pre-planning and driver training in order to be prepared for emergencies. The next question was, when will the city clean up the debris in the portion of the Kanaha Stream near Lejo Lejo Streets? The Department of Facilities Maintenance responded that their stored property ordinance branch inspected the city portion of the Makiki Ditch Kahana Stream area under the Lejo Lejo Street Bridge on May sixth, twenty twenty five, and identified some bulky items that would need heavy equipment to remove. Extraction of these bulky items was performed today, May fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the city portions of the Makiki Ditch Kahana Stream at this location was cleaned of all debris today. Upstream and downstream of the city portion of the Makiki Ditch Kahana Stream is indicated to be under state of Hawaii ownership and jurisdiction. The next question is, what is D P R or the Department of, um, Parks and Recreation doing to secure the basement of Building Forty Two where the United Korean Association is operating? So that people who enter the building and use the stairs cannot access the basement? Is the Department of Parks and Recreation going to install a secured entry system at Building Forty Two? And when will there be working air conditioning in the Park Office Building? Uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation responded that at this time, they are evaluating several options to secure the stairway access to the building of, excuse me, the basement of Building Forty Two in order to prevent unauthorized entry by non-staff. Because the building is designated as a historic structure, any modifications such as the installation of a secured entry system require review and approval from the State Historic Preservation or SHIPTI. This process ensures that any upgrades made to the facility are in compliance with preservation standards. Additionally, any building improvements, including the installation of a security system, will require funding, which the Department of Parks and Recreation will need to secure through appropriate channels. Regarding the Makiki Administration Building, we, they, the Department of Parks and Recreation is aware that the air conditioning system is currently non-operational. The existing unit is outdated and no longer supported, meaning a full replacement will be necessary. Due to the age and location of the building, replacements of the air conditioning system may need to be incorporated into a larger capital improvement project. The Department of Parks and Recreation is currently exploring alternative solutions and working to identify funding sources to address both the immediate and long-term needs of the facility. The Department of Parks and Recreation appreciates your patience and continued support as they work to improve the safety, functionality, and preservation of Makiki District Park facilities. And then finally, uh, parking at Makiki District Park. Uh, the two parking lots are often full or near capacity. Are there plans to create additional parking at the Makiki District Park? Also, there are concerns about non-park users parking at the lot on Makiki Street by the Community Garden. What will the Department of Parks and Recreation do to discourage non-park users from parking at Makiki Park, um, District Park? And their response is, following this recent inquiry, their team conducted an internal review of the parking situation at the Makiki District Park. They confirmed that both parking lots, particularly the lot located on Makiki Street near the Community Garden, are frequently operating at or near full capacity during peak hours. Unfortunately, due to limited open space within the park's boundaries, there are no feasible uh, ground level parking, um, expansion areas. Any future increase in parking capacity would likely require a vertical solution, such as a multi-level parking structure. However, such a project would require substantial funding and inter-agency coordination. At this time, no funds have been identified or secured for this type of development. Regarding concerns about non-park users utilizing the lots, the Department of Parks and Recreation acknowledges that this has been an ongoing issue. While ample signage is posted indicating that the park is for park users only, enforcement is a challenge. As the Department of Parks and Recreation is not an enforcement agency, uh, they rely on the Honolulu Police Department to assist with enforcement of parking regulations and park rules. Additionally, although increased monitoring by Department of Parks and Recreation staff would be beneficial, they are currently experiencing staffing shortages that limit their ability to provide regular oversight. Uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation is continuing to explore long-term strategies, including potential collaboration with the Honolulu Police Department and other city departments to improve parking management and preserve access for park users. Um, thank you for bearing with me. I know that was a long report. Does anyone have any questions about anything I reported?
Okay, thank you very much for thoroughly answering all of our questions. Uh, we'll start with Steel Quest.
Uh, can we get a copy of all that you just? We we couldn't even cut it all as you, good, but great for all the work you've done. Now you gotta get to see it.
Okay, Claire?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Megan, I just want to thank you for your tenacity and your incredible amount of homework you did to present all of us this information today. And yes, I could not keep up with you. Um, so I will contact you outside of this. In the interest of time, I'll, uh, contact you outside of this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Chuck?
Yeah, Megan, I also applaud you for your, um, tenacity in attacking those questions. But I also wanted to thank you very much for following up on that request that I had in for, I think, well over a year about the red striping, curb striping on Pensacola on those two bus stations, uh, bus stops. They finished it, I think, on April thirtieth. So I much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions from attendees? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is, uh, Councilmember Scott Nishimoto, uh, Taylor Date.
Well, the chair and board, thank you for having us and thank you to the mayor's representative for such a thorough report, um, covering a lot of our district. Uh, one of the issues someone brought up last week was just to, uh, put in a riser regarding the bus stop at Panaho and Wilder, I believe. And so from May, from April twenty eighth, uh, District One Patrol Officers made checks in the area, um, and reported homeless encampments who were intimidating pedestrians and also issued multiple citations for store property and litter control. Um, and the D F M Store Property Ordinance also did a check on this area as well. So they are monitoring the area, thankfully. Um, in other news, uh, my boss, you know, he really, um, listened to the concerns the board had, especially the Makiki Gardens, um, board. So uh, he put in a provision in the budget to allocate two hundred fifty thousand for fencing at the Makiki Community Garden. So it's currently in the draft. Um, hopefully to be approved by June fourth. So, um, that was, so you know, we're hoping to see change there. So, you know, and we do thank some of the Makiki, uh, Gardens, uh, members came to testify during our recent budget hearing. So that's really great to just see community support and they seem like a really great group. And so, yeah, we want to continue to work with them to try to get that through. Um, but yeah, please let me know if you have anything, uh, I can bring back to my boss.
Awesome. That's great news to hear about our, uh, Community Garden. Uh, are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions from attendees? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam, Robin Henskey.
Hi, everyone. Um, so I want to start off, um, I was able to share, I don't know. I can't access the chat box, um, but anyway, um, I, I, we have our, um, monthly Neighborhood, um, Board Report, um, which includes our monthly newsletter. Um, I know, uh, Board Member Santos, uh, touched on it on the beginning of the meeting, the five-way stop, a prospect, Elani in the Alapi. Um, as she stated, we are working with D T S, um, on finding solutions and the proper, um, budget for, uh, other possibilities than a five-way stop. Um, I appreciate H P D's enforcement on, um, any infractions and providing citations um, to drivers who are, uh, not stopping. Uh, regarding the Punch Bowl encampments, our Constituent Services Director Lynn Robinson has been working with Senator, um, Fukunaga and Rep Baladi, uh, directly with, um, the Director of Law Enforcement, Mike Lambert. They recently did the sweep on Diamond Head. They did the sweep combined with providing any services individuals might need. Shelter beds, wound care, like just services that they might need up there. He referenced that sweep as what could potentially happen in the near future for the Punch Bowl encampments. I know that there are several up there. There have been bonfires that have been set. HPD has been called numerous times. And so we're keenly aware of that and we're working with our state partners on how we can clear out those dangers. Regarding Bill Seven, our focus has been budget, as probably all of you know. And I think after that, we can focus on amending the Bill Seven program. We're reaching out to stakeholders, community members, and developers on how they recommend we can improve and also taking note from the community members, as you guys all have stated, great points on how the program can improve. So that's my report. If anyone has any questions?
Okay, are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we have community concerns from residents, limited to two minutes each. Residents not board members can share comments and concerns that are not listed on the agenda. Per Sunshine Law, concerns not on the agenda may be presented, but the board cannot take action. Are there any folks with any community concerns? Lindsay Chambers?
Hi, Chair Char. Good evening and to the board members, I just want to thank those who voted in support of the resolution regarding the traffic safety issues caused by Chick-fil-A operations at the previous meeting for the residents who took time in person over a few months to raise concerns about the ongoing problems. Your support meant a lot, even though the outcome was a little disappointing. As an update, I shared an email with Chair Char and board members Ian Ross and Harris Nakamoto today that the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board passed the Chick-fil-A Safety Issue Resolution with slight modifications during their May first meeting. And I'm hoping that this board, whose residents are directly impacted, will take action too. So I'll be in touch with Chair Char and whether or not that is another resolution. Or as Chair Carvalho mentioned, following his meeting, the possibility of a joint traffic and safety issue meet up with other urban core neighborhood boards. While the mayor's representative shared earlier in the meeting that DTS doesn't see any issues on Baritanga Street caused by Chick-fil-A operations, as they shared in my email today to the board members, Director Morton admitted that there is no record or official log of these observations and when they took place. If his staff is out there at off-peak hours, of course, they won't see, you know, any problems, but we'll never know because they're not following a formal process, which is alarming that they're making public safety decisions without any documentation. There are, there is evidence and videos shared on social media of these problems, as well as the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board's actions and comments on this safety issue that need to be addressed. So appreciate your time and we'll be in touch with Chair Char.
Okay, thank you very much, Lindsay. Do we have any other community concerns? Yep, if you could come up again, please. Oh, if you could use the microphone, please. And then just again, give us your name.
Name's Adam Kirchman. General question, I looked over the video from last month's meeting and I didn't see this being addressed. So I was going to address it here. The, there's a tree on the corner of Davenport, I mean, on Wilder in Pensacola, there's a gigantic, really old tree right where they're doing that construction and they've completely cut it down. And so I was wondering whether they had consorted, like, I don't know if it's protected. I know there's organizations on the island that do protect some of our older trees. So I was wondering if anybody knew anything about that.
They were, a quick, oh. Yeah, so a few, couple answers. So that one, that tree, as it turns out, was on private property. So they were within their rights to cut it down, unfortunately. That building that's being put out, I believe, oh, I see Ian Ross might have a, have information on that.
Separate issue, thank you very much, Chair.
Oh, never mind. Okay. And then Sam, you had something to add to that?
Actually, it was cut down by the state. The reason why it was cut down was because the tree limbs were going over the power lines and they were really worried what would happen if that tree fell down in the outage because all the power lines for the skyscrapers all run through that area. So that's why they did it. Now, they had permission from the landowner who's basically building a low, low-rent housing in that same area. So it was approved ahead of time and everybody knew they were going to do it. But it took about three days, two or three days.
Yeah, I was shocked. I just came by one day and I was.
Gone, yeah. But we knew, we knew it was going to come down sooner or later because it was just too big already.
All right, that's valid. I just was.
Yeah. Okay, Sam, I'll have to follow up on that. I actually have an email that I didn't read until now that actually said Division of Urban Forestry was not involved. It was a private effort. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have to follow up on this, especially since we can't take it up this board meeting. But, uh, but yeah, that, that tree has been around for decades and it was pretty shocking. At first I thought it was being, okay, I'm wasting time, sorry. Okay. Are there any further community concerns? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to state of Hawaii reports. Governor.
Chair, would you entertain a point of information?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I completely forgot. Ian, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I noticed on our agenda, we only have one vacancy open. Just for relevancy for our board, can you provide a very brief update on whether we've changed the number of board members? Thank you very much.
Okay, so, yeah, the quick answer is yes, I believe, until June. Yeah, until the end of June, our board membership is, how many at large? Oh, or we have one, okay, yeah, we have one open at large right now. And.
The answer would be that quorum is now seven votes, is that correct?
Yes, quorum is now seven votes.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, Russell Ping was not able to make it. I believe he sent me a report. It can be viewed on our Google Drive. So moving on to Senator Carol Fukunaga. Okay, moving on to Rep. Dela Baladi, Tom.
You're getting too stiff. Hello, members. Tom Heinrich on behalf of Representative Dela Baladi. She apologizes for not being here. She is in fact a part of a group with the Military Affairs Council, which is part of the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii, longstanding in Washington DC. They left late Monday night and yesterday was all day at the Pentagon. Not sure what the schedule is today and tomorrow because it was just packed solid, including meeting up with most of the members of the Hawaii Congressional delegation. So she'll be back over the weekend, back in the office on, on Monday. Just a couple of things for a quick update. I'm sorry, I do not better express or demonstrate my enthusiasm. That session is over. So Friday, May second, actually, as time flies, has been, been more than a week. But Friday, May second was adjournment CNA DA, so day sixty of the scheduled sixty session days. But quick comment, two quick comments on this. It's very interesting talking to many of the members and the quote-unquote permanent staff, that's there year-round because the energy level has kind of only gone down like twenty-five, thirty percent for the reason that everyone recognizes that this is more of a recess. Everybody expects that the legislature will be convened in a special session later this year. And in that regard, because of the uncertainties relating to not just the state budget, but especially all of the confusion that remains in Washington DC and what, if anything, the United States Congress may do. Keeping in mind that the end of the federal fiscal year is September thirty, so the start being October one. The last projection, if you will, if this can be held to by Senate President Ron Koche, is it's possible, more likely, that maybe the second week of October, so mid-October, might be that special session largely to deal with budget matters. But at least six weeks ago, all members of the legislature received a memo from the Senate President and Speaker of the House stating, please keep these three time periods open, be available, please do not travel. And those time periods initially identified were the last week of August, the last week of September, just going into October, and the, I want to say, third week, the fourteenth to the twenty-first, I believe, of November, so prior to Thanksgiving. Again, nothing is set, but it was clearly, or has been clearly, the concern all of session that we simply don't know what the overall federal budget picture is going to look like with the number of lawsuits that are ongoing that affect firings of the federal workforce, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, extremely chaotic times. The greatest single concern, I think, with that, if you will, relates to Medicaid and federal funding for, for each of the states, the federal contribution to Medicaid. And there's a lot of research going on in that and of course, a lot of battles on Capitol Hill as to what may finally result in either a budget bill or speaking individually. I'm not real optimistic. I expect it'll probably be more of a continuing resolution yet again. So that, that budget concern will, will long last. Coming back home, the session, like I said, did end a week ago, Friday on May second. The next two deadlines that we pay attention to, and more directly, the governor pays attention to, is June twenty-fourth is the deadline for the governor to notify the legislature of any bills that he intends to veto. And a little bit awkward language there, the situation is ten days prior to the ultimate deadline for the, for the governor to either sign a measure into law, allow it to become law without a signature, or veto it. That deadline is July nine and these are business days, not Saturday, Sunday or holidays. But June twenty-four is the deadline by which that veto list must be communicated to the Senate President and House Speaker. If a bill is on that list, it does not mean that guarantee the governor's going to veto it. But if the bill is not on that list, the governor is now obligated to allow that bill either by signature or non-signature to become law. Okay, so really, we know as a legislature, what are we looking into? What do we need to be prepared to possibly come back into a, I'll call it veto override special session? If one is called, it's too early to, to suggest anything on that. But in this regard, it gives a little more than ten days for the legislature to review what might be vetoed and whether there is sufficient interest, if you will, to come back and override that veto at that time. Different question that regularly comes up is this, and I don't have a definitive answer because there are a lot of variables. But the key is this, well, Tom, you said it's highly likely that there will be a special session later this year. Correct. The question then becomes, well, if you convene the House and Senate in special session, which can be a maximum of thirty days under the Constitution, thirty session days. But generally speaking, what has been spoken about and with some past experience is five-day period, ideally Monday through Friday. But the fastest that you could move a bill through the process to completion, if there are sufficient votes to be able to, I'll just call it fast-track it, in order to meet the minimal time requirements, et cetera, it would take five days. Because one of the keys is that the final version of a bill, before it is voted on by either the House or the Senate, particularly in final form at the end, is it must be available for a minimum of forty-eight hours. And that's forty-eight hours on the clock. So for instance, if the House voted on a budget matter, which generally speaking must originate in the House, if it votes on it at, say, twelve fifteen on Wednesday, then the Senate would not be able to complete its work until after twelve fifteen on Friday. Okay, and that would be a little off because still got to have hearings, okay? But the key on that is if there is good agreement, if it is pretty clear what needs to be done, a draft bill is in order, prior to convening that special session, you can move it. The concern that most members have is even if we are called into special session, everything may still be so variable at that point that it's like, be prepared to be there longer than five days. So if you're really watching the process, this will be a fascinating year. It already has been. It is extremely chaotic because of how much money is involved, what the implications are, not just for the state of Hawaii, but for the nation. And when you consider, as I mentioned already, the possible effect on Medicaid, the effect on all Department of Defense spending, the fact that Indo-PACOM Command is here on Oahu, et cetera. There's a hell of a lot in play, okay? Okay, having said that, let me just underscore what Taylor Date and Robin Henske have also reported and some of the questions here at the table. And that is especially Representative Baladi and the other electeds for the area are very much aware and helping to keep that pressure and push there for the Department of Law Enforcement, Department of Hawaiian Homelands, possibly Department of Land and Natural Resources, State Department of Transportation, to continue to work together focusing on that open wildland area between Royal Vista and the Stevenson Campus there along Prospect Street. That is not the only location, but as was reported after a recent, for lack of a better word, sweep in the Diamond Head area by multiple agencies, then the next area that is being contemplated with no schedule just yet, but it is intended to be soon, is to try to do a similar type of cleanup, if you will, in that Punch Bowl slash Prospect area. There are other things that need to be done and we'll leave that for a more detailed meeting. I would suggest, Chair, that for the next couple of meetings, in fact, very specifically, that that area be noted as a regular business item in order to facilitate the report back by the elected officials and others as to what's going on. Please keep in mind that the Department of Law Enforcement, we're still not totally used to speaking that way. The other new department is the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Those two departments are what are now on deck following the division of the former Department of Public Safety. So Representative Dela Baladi is Chair of the House Committee on Public Safety. By House rule, her jurisdiction includes the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. The Department of Law Enforcement, because of other issues, is within the jurisdiction of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. So there's a lot of kind of cross-consideration of certain things. But between just those two departments, that's the jurisdictional breakout in the House, okay? Okay, let me stop there. I'm sorry, one last thing, if I can add it right here, just real quick. And I'll pick on Patrick. And I'll pick on Patrick Smith as Neighborhood Commissioner and Chair of Adjacent Neighborhood Board, because we brought this up on Monday at the Commission's Neighborhood Plan Committee meeting. And that is one thing that the neighborhood boards collectively also need to begin to pay attention to is the beginnings of the activities of the Honolulu City Charter Commission. So it is newly formed, it has started its organizational activities, et cetera. But there are various ideas that have been considered in recent past before the City Charter Commission and some ideas that folks have spoken to already that are intended to be submitted to the Charter Commission as proposals. So that schedule I don't have yet. It is not easy to find the City Charter Commission's portion of the Honolulu.gov website yet. And I need to confirm that with the city clerk as to where are those records and schedules, okay? Thank you, Chair.
Awesome, thank you very much, Tom. Are there any questions for Tom? Ian?
I'm sorry, I see we're out of time.
Apologies, my hand was still earlier.
Thank you, I appreciate that intimidation.
Okay. Are there any, seeing no questions from the board, are there any from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, thanks, members.
Okay, next up, we have Representative Kim Koko Iomoto. And I believe I see, who did I see for that? Kate Ozawa.
Sorry, my camera is being weird. Okay, hi. So as Tom has just mentioned, session is over, thank God. But with that, Rep is, does not intend to slow down. We're trying to have town, we're in the process of scheduling some town halls across Kakaako, which is where her main district is. Two months ago, two months ago, we sent out a survey to her constituents. And we have the results. And they are posted on her legislative website, along with a link to sign up to her newsletter. I would post those links, except it seems that the chat function is disabled. So if you just go to the Hawaii State Legislature website and you go to Legislature and then House members and scroll to the right, Rep Iomoto, you'll be able to find her survey, the survey results, and also a link to sign up to her newsletter so that we can keep in touch. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Kate. Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much. And next up, we have Representative Ikaike Olds. Susanna, I apologize, I am not going to butcher your last name.
It's fine, it's Kandi Kati. Aloha, Chair and Board Members, Susanna Kandi Kati for Rep Olds. No extensive updates, they were, they have already been given. But like Kate said, Rep Olds's latest newsletter is available under his links tab on his website. So you can go see that there. And if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, and I guess before you bug out, are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Rep Andrew Garrett.
Hi, good evening, my name is Tukemi Nakasone for Representative Andrew Takuya Garrett. Good evening, Chair, Board Members. Rep Garrett is, sad to say that he's not able to make it today because he's traveling to Texas for a national conference of state legislature. So he's working hard for the state right now. So I'm representing his, on his behalf. But Tom has already said a lot about the legislature, so I'm not going to say anymore. Same thing for, from Susanna and Kate. We do have newsletters that address to his neighborhood, includes town lists. So hopefully in the next month or so, we'll be sending that shortly, which also will be linked to his website at the Legislature or the Capitol website. We do want to let you know that Rep is working hard during the interim to make sure that we hear from you. So hopefully those who get their newsletters will respond to. Do any, have any questions, call us at the office. Do you have any questions for me?
Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions from attendees? Seeing none, nope, no questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, moving on now to board business and presentations. First up, we have filling of one vacant at-large seat. Are there any interested takers? Adam, come up and would you like to give us a quick spiel on who you are and why you're interested?
Well, as I mentioned before, I'm resident manager at Village Ma'ohia. Lived there for many years. I also own a business here doing carpentry, restoration, remodeling, furniture building, general thing. I also have a master's in social work with emphasis on mental health and nonprofit management. Graduated from Loyola University of Chicago. I've worked with FEMA, the Red Cross, and first response, doing crisis response, first responders, stuff like that in Chicago, as well as many other cities. I really love this community. I've grown very attracted, attached to it, and I'm not going anywhere for a very long time. So and there's just general things within my, just my street alone that I I'm constantly being involved in and meeting my neighbors and talking about the things that affect us, sometimes more so than others, like again, last week with the cars. So and I've been encouraged by some of the people in my building to come here and fill a seat. So here I am. Any other questions for me? Am I a candidate for the current election for the seat? Yes, I'd like to be on the board.
Oh, no, he, I don't believe he is a candidate in the election.
No, 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 I'm not, just, just would like to help out here.
In a week or so.
I don't know.
Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, oh. Okay.
Also, I have a, I also have a 13-year-old daughter that goes to Punahou as well, so.
Just if you could give us your first and last name again?
Adam Kirchman, that's. Yes, of course.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and recess while we check out everything.
I do, oh my gosh, we've met. Yes, we've met. I, I don't go on Nextdoor for.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 we've talked.
It's great, nice. No, never. I recognize.
Okay, I'll go ahead and bring us out of recess. Okay, Sam moves to accept or appoint Adam and seconded by John. Does this have to be a roll call vote? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and. Okay, and if Ian and Richard are able to turn on your cameras when voting online? Okay. All right, the nominee is Adam Kirchman. If you could just say Kirchman, if you'd like for Adam to fill the vacant at-large seat. Okay. Char. Salassa. Kirchman. Silva. Absent. Mitchell. Kirchman. Nakamoto. Absent. Heck. Absent. Ross.
Kirchman.
Kirchman. Steelquist. Kirchman. Kiwanu.
Kirchman.
Kirchman. Lakalaka Manapuna, absent. Lee.
Kirchman.
Kirchman. Santos.
Kirchman.
Okay, Kirchman. Vote is eight in favor of Kirchman. You are now a member of the board.
Thank you.
Okay, and once again, I'll put us in recess so you can take the oath. Okay, awesome, I'll take us out of recess now. Okay, and then moving on with the agenda. Next up is approval of written summaries for the video record for Thursday, April 17, 2025. Were there any corrections that anyone needs to make? Seeing none, we have our minutes. Okay, next up, we have approval of a letter requesting the first floor and basement of the former Makiki Library for the Korean Cultural Center, Cultural Community Center. Ian, I believe.
All right, I'm not the the primary drafter of this, was there someone else presenting on this one?
Nope. I don't see anyone to present.
Come in, may I recommend we come back to this in the next, as the next agenda item?
Okay. Yep, well, we will, if there's nobody here to present.
I, I can get, I want to give some comments on this.
Oh, okay.
This building used to be part of the Sugar Planters Association. And the basement is highly radioactive. We did monitoring in the basement with a couple shipyard workers, which were radiation monitors and showers, the piping below it is all radioactive. I mean, one of, was one of the highest radiation levels that we found. And I don't know if the state knows it, I don't know if the city knows it, when they donated the building, but they were keeping people out of that basement for the longest time. So I don't know if you need to address it, but that's something that needs to be looked into.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Sam. We'll go ahead and move on to the next thing, which is a presentation by a motion to support Honu Homeless Outreach and Navigation for Unchallenged Persons. Unfortunately, they sent, or they got back to me today and stated that they were recommended to not set up at Paua Inha Park. So unfortunately, we don't get, we don't get to see them. Okay, moving on to presentation by OHA regarding OHA's strategic plan. Alena Farden, one of our former board members.
Aloha, no, I'm Kalea Kaka, and I'm honored to serve as your OHA Oahu trustee at the Office Point Affairs. And I wanted to say aloha to the Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Makiki, Lur, Punch Bowl, Tantlis Neighborhood Board for welcoming us, the Office Point Affairs. And aloha to those online and any elected officials or government employees that are joining us this evening. Joining me as well from the Office Point Affairs is my, part of my team, my Akaka team, Mark Watanabe. And then I also wanted to have Alena introduce herself, and then I'll talk more about some of OHA.
So aloha Chair, aloha Neighborhood Board, and all of Makiki Neighborhood and community. My name's Alena Farden, I serve on the Office of Hawaiian Affairs as their Senior Director for Strategy and Implementation. Our goal here in coming here quarterly with the Neighborhood Board is to reestablish relationship in Pelina with the board, particularly one with the concerns that the Neighborhood Board has, but also with its relationship with our largest native Hawaiian community up in Kalavahine and Papukolea. So just a few things we wanted to touch on in reestablishing this connection with you and relationship and also our ongoing priorities that may align with what the community is also looking for as well. So the first up is our Mana'i Mauli'ola Strategic Plan. Given what Tom had also shared with the federal funding freezes and cuts that we're looking at, we are looking to launch at least 14 programs within the next fiscal year, which is in a little less than a month from now, across education, healthcare, workforce, and housing. So these are things that will be across the Paineora, across the state, will have effect on our native Hawaiian population, but also the state as a whole. Also wanted to share that our biennial budget for FY '26 and '27 was also gone to the legislature. It didn't have the turnout we have, but we still have the budget that will move forward with critical implementation of of programs and initiatives. Next with that, we also wanted to share updates on our Native Point Registry Card. This card is free for those with Native Point ancestry. And the benefits of the card allows them to access loans and grants and programs, including our AHO program, which is access to homeownership, which is an assistance to down payment. So I'll leave these materials in the back, so folks that may want them, they can have more information with that. And then second to the last update is our Board of Trustees schedule. All are welcome to our Board of Trustees meetings, are open to the public. You can provide testimony either in person or online. Our Board of Trustees oversees the governance and policy decision and strategic oversight. We also have a beneficiary advocacy and empowerment committee that addresses community needs and beneficiary priorities. We have a budget and finance committee that oversees our financial performance and our investment and land management committee that oversees OHA land holdings. The last update I did want to share is one of the priorities for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is making OHA a employer of choice. We have the critical key positions within our organization to fill. And to help with this recruitment, we are providing a $5,000 signing bonus for specific positions that are critical in doing our mission, compliance advocate, GIS analyst, grants manager, and grants officer, and so forth. So I'll leave those here. Happy to take any questions if there's any.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
Well, as you're thinking of some of those questions, I also want to share with you a bit of history about the Office Point Affairs. We were created in 1978, as most of us are aware of the history of Hawaii. And we, we were created with.
And we, we were created with the mission, and it remains the same, which is to better the conditions for our native Hawaiian people. And this is in alignment with our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, which Alena had touched on, which is Mana'i Maoli'ola, the four appointed directions and our pillars are health, housing, economic resiliency, and education. So that is much of what we do, and we have the various committees that Alena had touched on. We meet about every first and third Wednesday of the month. And then we, on the next day, Thursday, we have our board meetings oftentimes to ratify some of what we voted on in those committees. So that's another opportunity that we welcome you to join us if there's any specific concerns that you feel affect our native Hawaiian people or should be raised to us. We invite you to speak during our community concerns, whether it's online or in person at our Nalama Kukui Boardroom, which is the former Gentry Pacific Design Center in the Evilei. Evilei area. Yes.
One of the things that was brought up a couple, couple years ago, you were talking about building a water tank up in the Papua Kolea area. And it was going to be connected, of course, they're going down Pensacola. They've been digging it up, the pipes. And there was big complaint from the people back up there that they were worried about the soil was going to subside from the construction of the water tank. Did anybody ever review that? I know, Alena, you, you were on the board when that was being brought up, I think.
I do remember that issue. We can take that back up to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and have a response.
Right, right in the middle of that actually being completed. So you know, that's something that needs to be looked at.
Thank you for sharing that.
Okay, next I see Richard.
Yes, hi. How much federal funding do you folks get in all its different forms and with the current situation in DC? How is it, how might it affect you folks?
First of all, we're, we're a state agency. But we, we provide funding. So for instance, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands was mentioned earlier. So in partnership into Koko'a, we provide up to $3 million to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to Koko'a them, and that is in contract for a number of years. We also provide, well, let me just rewind back in time and how this goes into the creation of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So the funding that we have, which goes into our Native Hawaiian trust fund, that funding is coming from the what I refer to as our Native Hawaiian Crown and Government lands of our Hawaiian Kingdom, which is currently known as the ceded lands of the Public Land Trust. So those that are on those lands, various entities are DLNR, DOT, UH, and so forth. So those proceeds that we receive, we're constitutionally mandated to receive 20% of those proceeds. However, in our due diligence, we found that we are getting closer to three to four, maybe 5% of that. And that was through audits and, and reviewing the reports of those various entities that are on these lands, and we found that they are on an honor system. So they are putting in what they believe they should be to the state. So the state is not receiving the proper funding. Therefore, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is not receiving the proper funding. So during the, the days of the Lindo Lingo administration, we were capped at about $15.1 million. We worked really hard, and we were able to lift that up to $21.5 million in recent years. Now, I just want to give some perspective going back to that 20% and what's really three to four, five percent. The baseline that we should be receiving, whether you want to include inflation or not, at the very least, would be closer to $79 million. So the funding that we receive, and then going straight back into our community, that part of that goes into our grants, our sponsorships, and various things that we do within the community to fulfill our mission and our strategic plan. But in terms of what federal funding looks like and how that affects our beneficiaries, our people, and the community as a whole, we have various schools that are seeking out our Koko'a because they are worried about the federal funding that is not going to them, and various other entities.
Okay, thank you very much. Richard.
No, no, thank you very much. I was curious, so thank you for your answer.
Ian? I thought I saw Ian's handle, but it's down now.
Sorry, Chair. I was just going to clarify that we did get an update that from the Board of Water Supply that they canceled that project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay. I'll do Eric first, then Chuck. So Eric.
Hi, I'm just curious if OHA has any community involvement for invasive species in mainly Papua Kolea area. Right now, in my neighborhood in Makiki, I'm fighting the little fire ants. And I know that there are some hotspots in the Papua Kolea area. So I'm just curious if there's any outreach from OHA with the community there about addressing little fire ants and trying to get rid of them in our neighborhood.
Mahalo for that mana'o. A lot of what we do is advocacy. And part of that advocacy is interacting with our government from a county, a state, and a federal level. So on, for instance, the state level, we just came out of the open session of the state legislature, and part of what we do are tracking bills, providing a legislative package on things that affect our native Hawaiian people, our ina, our surrounding waters, and so forth. So specifically regarding that invasive species, and I think that also goes hand in hand with the coconut rhinoceros beetle. Those specific things, I did ask that our public policy team make sure to track, and that there were certain bills that came out of the legislature to make sure that was included in our matrices and to be in support of that because from a native Hawaiian standpoint, this, this is very invasive in the sense where it affects not just our new or coconut trees, but hala, so forth. There's so many things that affect us in our community, so it's something that we make sure to stay on top of. Mahalo.
Okay, Chuck.
Yes, I'd like to commend you and Alena for coming out here. I can't recall any person from OHA coming out and making an outreach like both of you have today.
Thank you.
And you said that this was going to be a quarterly thing?
Yes, so we're trying to gauge how to do this in a sustainable manner, as we have all these various neighborhood board meetings. So for instance, we came over the mountain just now and joined you after presenting at the Kahalu'u Neighborhood Board. I'm sorry, not the Kahalu'u, that was last night. The mahalo, the Kane Ohe Neighborhood Board meeting. So so much going on, and that's after a series of meetings today at the office side in the boardroom. So it's an exciting time, but we mahalo you for welcoming us, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, because this, this does help us stay on the pulse of the needs and concerns of the community. And we feel that this is an opportunity for us to be able to further our presence in the community so that we can, like Alena said, build on the Pelina, the relationship, so that we can kako'o and collaborate where it makes sense. But we are looking at a quarterly, perhaps a monthly, but something that is sustainable, whether it's myself and/or a member of our administration. And a lot of the boards, the Neighborhood Boards, same sentiment as you had said, thanking us and requesting, kindly requesting of our monthly or quarterly presence, and we're looking forward to doing that virtually and or in person. And some have even asked that we, we join in the category with the other elected officials and so forth, where it makes sense, or we can maybe do, thank you, a three-minute set of announcements or things that we feel would be important for you to know, or if you have any mana'o that you wanted to share with us. I think that would be a good opportunity.
Terrific. Thank you.
Mahalo.
Okay, Adam.
Is there any information in particular that your organization would need from us? So if you did come in different meetings or whatever, and you wanted, because I'm sure we could gather information just being in our communities, something that you might need from us that we could better assist you?
So much. Mahalo nui for that, that question that mana'o shared. I think absolutely there's great opportunity for that. I think it was touched on specifically the Papua Kolea neighborhood as the, the this community is, they are our beneficiaries. They are part of us. So if there are any specific matters that you feel should be brought to our attention, please do. Another point of information that we are interested is, is data. Any information that could help us do the work that we are set out to do from our mission to our strategic plan, please share it this way, because part of the data that we're, that we're working with, it helps us with the charge and how, where to target our attention to, and what's, what, what is specifically needed within the community. So for instance, when we're meeting with our legislators, we provide them about like a one to two-sheeter of what we're doing within the community on the island that affects their community, and welcome them to share that information with their constituents, as they have native Hawaiian constituents and those that have the aloha for the Hawaiian people that would be interested in knowing. So different things, and if there's events going on that would qualify for sponsorships or grants, we'd be interested in, in them as well.
Just one more thing to add, being a resident of Makiki and knowing that it's a very highly densely condominium community, as we're looking at housing and housing initiatives and programs, I think more data or any resolutions that the board would put forth around condominiums, around housing, around tenant rights would be of interest to us as well. Thanks.
Claire.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for being here today. Speaking of partnering and, and community initiatives, I'm co-lead for Disaster Health Services with the Red Cross, and one of our initiatives is the Sound the Alarm Fire Safety. We have come around through Papua Kolea doing home evaluations, fire safety education, and smoke detector installation. Is that something we could partner with you folks with as well?
Mahalo. I think that that might be something that we can share with our administration, possibly a presentation. As the Oahu Island trustee, what I like to do is have meetings within our native Hawaiian community, our highly densely populated native Hawaiian community. So what we've done through time is have meetings on the Waianae side, the west side, the Kapolea area, here in Kapolea, and also on the Windward side and Waimonalo side. And what we give time to, like what you're doing here, having the Office of Hawaiian Affairs be able to present, we have different agencies that would affect our native Hawaiian population and something that would be positive to share, I think would be that, as Papua Kolea, this is, this is a neighborhood that we, we want to encourage, and part of what we do with our advocacy is letting it be known what our current challenges are so that we can have the aid of the voices when it comes to the legislature or at the various counties or at the federal level. It helps to have the voices of our community to support in what we're doing and give the reason and data as to why it's so important for us to have this funding and so forth. And even the very existence of what we do, it helps, it helps in the breath of that.
And we're happy to try it to help keep people safe in their homes.
Thank you.
Having been in the homes in Papua Kolea now, I think we need, we have a greater need to be helping in that area.
Can you please repeat the name so I can note that down and bring that back?
Sound the Alarm?
Sound the Alarm.
American Red Cross. I hope this, in a future meeting, the Neighborhood Board will support these initiatives to get out in the community.
These regarding fire?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, regarding fire.
Smoke detector, fire safety.
I think it also is reminding me of some of the recent fires that we've been experiencing. Climate change is the theme of our latest kava'ola, which we will be able to provide to you as well, the various handouts that we have. And with what's happened in the highlands and so forth, I think a lot of us as a community, we're looking at how, what this means within the climate and how we can be take preventive measures.
We like to be proactive.
Yes, absolutely.
So we'll see.
Productive in the proactive methods.
See about bringing this board in to support the cause and developing a partnership.
Mahalo.
Mahalo to you too. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any further questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any questions from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much, and I suppose.
Much for having you guys. Aloha, no.
Seeing you guys in a quarter. Okay, next up on the agenda is a motion to support dog-friendly parks in Makiki. I noticed it was the, it's a city initiative by Parks and Rec to reach out to neighborhood boards and see if we're, would like to see our parks become dog-friendlyer. I believe right now, our own Makiki District Park technically does not allow pets. Our only dog park, if you will, is, wow, I am blanking on the name of it. Up the hill, up the hill, Makiki. Archie Baker Park. Correct. It used to not be a dog park, and now it is. So. Do we have a, would anyone like to entertain a motion to support dog-friendly parks in Makiki?
Yeah.
Claire.
Motion to support dog-friendly parks in Makiki as a dog lover myself.
I second that.
Okay, and we have a second from Adam.
We have already two that we're supporting. There is a dog park committee that has kind of disappeared in the last couple of months, a couple of years. For Makiki.
With the board?
Yeah, with the board.
Okay, yeah, we haven't seen that in years.
No, 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 no.
Um. Yeah, but anyway, so, so far, though, we, I did receive one bit of testimony against making our parks dog-friendlyer. He's concerned about sanitary conditions and liability issues if the dogs attack folks. Otherwise, I've only ever heard good things about having our dog, our parks be dog-friendlyer. Even right now, you know, if you drive by or walk by our Makiki District Park, there are usually dogs in the park despite it being technically not allowed. I recognize Claire.
Thank you, Chair. I'll, I'll be honest, the number one injury to dogs occurs in dog parks. And personally, I don't take my dogs to dog parks. The last one had autoimmune disease, so dog park was a, you know, could be a fatal place for him to go. However, we've got more and more people and more and more people lonely since the pandemic who need a companion, and that's either going to be typically a cat or a dog. And they can't stay cooped up in these microunit condos 24/7. So they need, we need to provide for our little furry friends. And it won't hurt anything. We generally, dog people take care of cleaning up after our animals and keeping them leashed and safe. So I do support, we, we need to take care of our little companions. I will always support friendlier dog spaces. Mahalo. Thank you, Chair.
Is there any further discussion?
Chair.
Yes, Ian.
In reading the letter, it seems like they delineate between area-city parks without dog privileges and those with dog privileges. I'll note that I'm very happy to see that Punahoe Square is listed as an off-leash future park on this letter, which is great correspondence. It seems to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, that what's being asked of us by the city is not just whether we would support more dog parks, but which parks we would support making more dog friendly. Would it be okay if I read through the list of current parks without dog privileges to help advance this conversation?
Uh, yeah, we, I believe we all got the letter, but.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure because it wasn't referenced. So which case, you know, I think real simply then, Punahoe Square, seeing as it might be a future, it's going to be a future location, be a great place to be an on-leash dog park in the meantime. Additionally, adding either Makiki District Park as a on-leash or even better off-leash. Those were two that stand to mind to me. The other one is Makiki Street Mini Park is, receives almost no usage and is a great location away from other parks. That seems like it would be good for a on-leash dog park. That's just my observations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ian. Are there, is there any further discussion? Oh, Ian, your hand is up again. I lied. Okay.
Would.
Yep, go for it.
Yeah, would this include, you know, would we need to be putting up, you know, places for the dogs to, you know, baggage, trash cans for the dogs to, because I, my dog, I have a dog as well.
Uh, trash cans for the dogs to, because I, my dog, I have a dog as well, ESA actually, who's with my daughter. So, um, yeah, would that, would we be adding those to the park as well?
Uh, yes, the, uh, Parks and Rec announcement did say that they're, that they intend to put in dog baggies and trashcans, uh.
Water.
Oh, and water, yes.
And also fence off between large and small dogs so that, you know.
Okay, and I'm repeating what Sam is saying because he's not speaking into a mic, but they, they would delineate between large and small dogs. But yeah, um, so, um, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, I, uh, is there any opposition? Does anyone vote, intend to vote against or abstain from the vote to support, uh, dog parks or dog-friendly parks in Makiki? Seeing none, our motion passes. Okay, uh, moving on to resolution supporting speed humps on King Street and Baritana Street between Punahou Street and Ward Avenue. Uh, so we put this on, or we tabled this, uh, to hear from EMS and as we heard earlier, all, or not all, but uh, at least both fire and police came back and said it's, it'll slow them down a smidge, but otherwise it will not impact their safety. Um, is there any further discussion? And I see Claire.
You know, um, as a former first responder and ER nurse and flight nurse, when you are trying to do chest compressions or start an IV or start a, stop a bleed or, or maintain the head elevation, you want as few bumps as possible. When it's your loved one in the rig or, or the fire is responding to your home, you don't want to hear they're slowing down for speed humps. This is my personal professional bias. I, I, I I'm aware of that and I just cannot support speed humps. Those particular roads are arteries to our main hospitals. The rigs need to move. So I, I just can't support slowing them down. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Sam.
Is there any budget proposals for this stuff? I mean, we can, we can go and pass a motion and it won't mean anything unless the city, yeah, you know, unless the city council is actually looking at putting speed humps in this area.
Okay. Yeah, because we have not voted on either a motion or a resolution yet. So yes, they would be unaware.
Okay.
Um, all right, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, is there any opposed or abstaining from accepting the resolution? Sorry. Oh, yes, is there a motion to adopt the resolution first? I move.
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, and Ian seconds? Uh, all right, I believe we have heard fairly substantial, um, discussion. Uh, is there anyone opposed or abstaining?
Opposed.
Okay, uh, I guess we'll go ahead and do this by roll call. All right, uh, resolution supporting speed humps on King Street and Baritana Street between Punahou Street and Ward Avenue. Char. I. Salasa. I. Silva. Silva.
I.
I. Mitchell. I. Nakamoto and Peck absent. Ross.
I.
I. Steelquist. I. Kawano.
I.
I. Laka Laka absent. Lee. I. Santos. Nay. And Kirchman. I. Uh, nine I votes, uh, one nay. No abstaining. And the resolution has been adopted. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, let's see here. The discussion and motion on Punch Bowl safety regarding recent bonfires and coordination with the New Uwanu Punch Bowl Neighborhood Board. Uh, we do have wow, this is a bad night. Yeah, Patrick with us from our neighboring, neighborhood board. Um, this was brought to me by Harris, um, but he's not here. So do, uh, is there anyone to speak on this matter? Chuck? Okay. Yeah, okay. And, uh, yeah, so and Claire doesn't have anything either. And I know they've all been working. Yeah, so I guess unfortunately we don't have anything for you. I'm sorry, Patrick. Oh, but if you'd like to come up and.
Hi, Patrick Smith, uh, Chair of the Neighborhood, I wore number 12, which is New Uwanu Punch Bowl. What, what's the issue? I'm sorry. I don't even, that way we can be prepared about it. We're having our meeting uh, Tuesday, so we can't, um, put it on our agenda, but maybe it's something we could talk about in the future. So if you just kinda give me a gross overview.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead, Claire.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Patrick. Um, we have a large population of, are there at least seven homeless campsites in the Punch Bowl Forest? Okay? And we've had multiple HFD responses. They're starting fires, waking people up. And it's only getting worse. So we are trying to mitigate all of that by multi-agency involvement, federal, state and city to do a sweep and to provide fencing and other, um, aspects to keep that off limits. Because there's a, an opening, is that by Royal Vista? Is that the name of it on Prospect Street? There's an opening, that's their entry and exit into, into it. So since Punch Bowl is strangely split between this neighborhood board and yours, which, please take us back, um, we're, we want to involve you folks because it's the whole of the Punch Bowl crater and outer slopes that are involved with this. So we want to include you, your board as well in any, um, actions and mitigation efforts. Because you may know, you may be privy to things on your side of Punch Bowl that we're not aware of.
I, well, uh, if I can go ahead, um, I'm not really, I haven't heard anything about any, uh, homeless encampments on Punch Bowl. I mean, it doesn't surprise me. We actually have one in our neighborhood, uh, that, I mean, we have multiple, but one that's really problematic, especially when it comes to fires. Uh, and it's right on Pacific Heights as you cross, uh, uh, oh my gosh, cross it every day, whatever this road is. But it, it, it's, it's been a situation where we have had people call the fire department a lot. And this happened years ago. This has been brought up. They would call the fire department a lot and they would be cooking fires. So the fire department would go up there. And it sort of came down to, you know, do you not want us, you know, the neighborhood, the neighbors would say, do you not want us to call the fire department? And they're like, well, we can't say that because you'd never know. So it, it, it's sort of a thorny problem. And I will tell you, um, we worked with Carol, uh, well, when Carol, uh, Puganaga was our, uh, county council member. So she really has extensive experience on this. So I, I would honestly, I'd reach out to her and talk to her, you know, her, her staff. Because, um, what happened was, uh, we would always have people come out and clean up the camps and they'd come right back. And it, it is a very, uh, thorny problem and we're certainly helped, uh, do whatever we can. But like I said, I haven't, we haven't, I haven't heard any reports of that particular area being a problem.
I think that's why we want to include you folks. I think the fires are mostly on the Prospect Street side. But since Punch Bowl is divided between two neighborhood boards.
Right.
Sorry, um, it's just absurd. Um, we want to include you and, and, you know, be part of the solution. You may have great ideas. You may have information we don't have. And because we want to include fencing and the Hawaiian community, this gets very involved. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of groups involved. So we want to inclu- be inclusive of anyone who's affected.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. And, and we do have, um, representatives from the Papua, Papua Kolea Communities Center that are part of our board. So however we can help. Yeah, if, if someone wants to reach out to me personally and we can talk about it and we can get our boards working.
Will do, and I'll resume attending your board meetings as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Patrick. Okay, uh, seeing no further discussion for this one, uh, I'll keep it on the agenda as clearly there's interest. And moving on to discussion and motion to examine more safety measures to make the five-way intersection of Iolani Avenue, Prospect Street, Alapai Street safer. Claire.
Thank you. Um, as you know, a year ago, we, we went through this and a five-way stop was initiated at that intersection, which unfortunately has not had the desired effect of a safer intersection. In fact, it's more dangerous because from a human factors perspective, psychologically, people see the stop sign, assume the other car is gonna stop and they don't. So the screeches are there. The pedestrian lack of safety is there. It's an awkward intersection. The stop signs are not equidistant. So one of them is set back so far, they can't see the other stop signs. It's just an awkward situation. I have been working with Tyler Dos Santos Tem's office and, um, we're working with Department of, uh, Transportation Safety towards next steps on a solution. So for the time being, I would like to just motion that we uh, continue this as a regular monthly business item on our agenda so that we can follow through with city council and DTS towards a solution.
Okay, so you're making a motion to keep this on the agenda.
Motion to keep it on the monthly agenda, yeah.
Seconded by John.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, John.
Yeah, are there any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, we're gonna keep it on the agenda. Um, is there any further discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will indulge myself. Uh, I happen to look into a little bit of traffic safety measures. Uh, one intriguing proposal that I thought looked interesting for us because one of the the issues that the city always harps on is cost, which is somewhat understandable. Um, so perhaps a cost-efficient method of safety would be to perhaps use, uh, plastic barriers to set up perhaps the bowl belt that we talked about. Uh, fairly extensively when, uh, this matter was first brought up. Um, plastic is cheap compared to, you know, building an actual, uh, bowl belt. And we get, it's, it'd be like a pilot, uh, the, oh, I'm sorry, yes. So it's a bit of a pilot in that, you know, it, it's plastic. It's easy to put up. It's easy to break down if it doesn't work or if we need to make it more, uh, concrete. Uh, so, yeah, so, um, but either way, uh, that, that was my only bit that I wanted to add to this, uh, discussion.
Thank you, Chair. We are open to thinking outside the box. We always knew the stop signs were the cheapest, fastest thing to do and they weren't gonna work. And that has proved itself out and that's yesterday's news. So let's, you know, we want to move forward with better solutions to make that safer. Um, I even had a person who was on the sidewalk challenge me in his black Tesla pickup truck. He wouldn't get, he, he was on the sidewalk, you know, he wanted to get around traffic. So it's just become even more dangerous there. And, uh, so all solution ideas are, are welcome. Thank you very much.
All right, is there any, oh, I see Richard. Any luck, Richard, with unmuting yourself? Okay, uh, well, as we can't hear anything from Richard, uh, are there any other further comments? Seeing none, we'll see this more on the agenda. Okay, uh, moving on to board and community reports. And if, uh, Richard happens to be able to chat with us, uh, we'll circle back to him. Uh, nice neighborhood committee report. Harris is not here. Um, Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Neighborhood Security Watch, Chuck. Got nothing. Uh, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, Steelquist. Okay, yep, we did receive the report. It was a hefty one, uh, last, last meeting. Okay, um, seeing nothing from Richard still, so I'll continue on. Uh, board announcements. Next regular meeting, the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tannelist Neighborhood Board Number 10 is scheduled to meet on Thursday, June 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at Makiki District Park. The old community library, second floor and online via WebEx. The meetings can be viewed on Olalo Focus 49 on the first Friday at 9:00 PM and the third Sunday at 3:00 PM. Follow us at www.facebook.com/makikinb and visit www8.honolulu.gov/nco/nb10 for Makiki Neighborhood Board info. And one last chance for Richard. Okay, sorry, Richard. Uh, would anyone like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and we are adjourning slightly early at eight oh five.